There are, Mike might not make it today, four to five. And Sanford comes in after seven.
What?
Sanford comes in usually a little after seven. And we have a four. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this regular monthly meeting of Thursday, September 12, 2024 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, September 3, 2024. Add notification to the general public, to the general public of said meeting and send to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, September 3, 2024, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Departments, and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, September 3, 2024. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced the adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Director?
David Edwards, present. Anthony Forbes. Reverend Forbes, you're muted if you're saying yes. Reverend Forbes is online.
He's online.
Angel, we can't hear the, we can't hear the meeting.
Oh, that's probably why.
That's probably why. Let's see if Angel can press the right button.
Okay, got it. We can hear you now. Thank you. Yeah, we can hear.
Anthony, we're doing, good. We're doing roll call for Reverend Forbes. Anthony Forbes? We're doing roll call? And do we have a present for you from you?
Rem. I think we lost them again.
Can you hear us again? Is there a problem?
Commissioner Forbes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
So you're present.
And you're present, I presume?
Oh, I can't hear. I didn't know we were doing roll call. Yes, I'm present. Hopefully, I'm here.
Reverend Forbes.
Present.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo. James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
Present.
Is Mike present?
He's not. Do you see him?
No, I don't see him.
Okay.
Okay, um, so can we move forward with the public portion? Do we have anybody?
Yes, we do.
Adrian Rollins?
Adrian Rollins, 560 Marshall Drive. I don't know how many times I have to come to meetings and tell you that the second floor up never gets cleaned on a regular basis. And you wonder why the rats and the mice and other vermin are going into people's units and in the hallways. Again, I sent a text this afternoon of right outside my door by the compactor, trash. Stuff that should have been picked up, and it was there since this morning when I left. I don't know what it's gonna take. I'll do the cleaning, but I'm gonna charge you for it. Because I already have a job, and I already have to take care of my own unit. I shouldn't have to take care of the hallway, too. That's not my job. It's frustrating. And my cat was sitting at the door tonight meowing because she hears the mice in the wall trying to come in. They wanna come in because there's garbage on the floor in the hallway. It's not clean. Every single day, I either have to step over garbage, or something wet, or a cigarette. I don't smoke. Neither my kids. My girls don't smoke, my boys don't smoke. Why is it there on the floor in front of my door? That makes no kind of sense. But if you want me to clean it, I'm gonna charge you for it. My sister had, still has several outstanding maintenance issues that were supposed to be completed before she moved in, and they are still not completed. Yesterday, she called Oscar and said that Danny would be to her unit this morning at 10:30. When he didn't show up, she called and said, she called and, Oscar said that there was an emergency at 220 Adams. I'm all for taking care of emergencies, but is that the only guy you've got working? Don't you have more people working? There should have been something done within the last month. It's a month now, and nothing is completed. And, you know, I mean, it's frustrating. You only have one person working, that's, you know, I don't get it. We need to hire more people, go through the C-WEF program, go through the OJT program. We've already discussed this many, many times before about getting more help. Barbara even mentioned it a few years back. You know, you need staff, go to these programs. You have the contact information, use it.
Thank you, Adrian. Commissioner Weyers?
Good evening, Commissioner Weyers. 15 Church Towers, Mountain Chair, is this agenda items or agenda items only, or?
This is public portion. You have five minutes to speak on whatever you want to say.
Right, but you're not doing agenda because I just started and, um, see if you're interested.
As you know, there's nothing new in these meetings. You can speak on the agenda items. There's never a back and forth, so.
Right, I know. That's what I'm just saying. I just didn't know you do both. As much as I've been coming, I really didn't know that you do.
You can speak on whatever you'd like to speak on.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, when you was doing the roll call and the ones that's like Mr. Forbes is not here, he answered you. Michael didn't answer. That's why I asked you, is he in the meeting? So he's not in the meeting. Okay, so with that being said, I want that placed on the record because I was supposed to meet Mike here today with some business that I wanna conduct concerning housing. And I want you guys to know the seriousness of the crisis with housing and the issue I've been having with my son, Rafael Ross, and my daughter, Deshona Williams. Okay? I want that placed on the record. And with the respect to the way you do your office hours, I'm not here to control how you run your business. Mr. Ref, I'm quite sure you're doing a phenomenal job, but is there any way you can expedite when we come for office hours? I've seen you five, five and a half weeks ago, and me and Ralph still waiting, and you was nice enough to take us in that time. I haven't received a call. Maybe our numbers is not working, but I'm still waiting for your office hours to come. At least, uh, what I thought tonight if Mike would have been here, a conclusion to this serious matter that's ongoing for a year. I'll appreciate that, okay? I don't wanna place nothing else on the record until we do it back separately. And a few items real quick. You withdrawing the project for the housing? Maybe, please tell me I'm reading wrong. No? Okay, so 2024-9-16, resolution to withdraw the request for the proposal for the development partners. Are you just gonna get somebody else to do it?
Well, you know, that's right. If you hang around long enough, you'll know that those resolutions were based on the agenda, and you'll see how you go with it.
Okay, good, thanks. That's it. Okay, then I'll wait with agenda items. Other than that, I appreciate the time. Hi, Bird. Thank you. Have a good night.
My lady, my lady, you may ask away.
Good evening, Mountain Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Director, and members of the public. Thank you very much this evening. This, Mountain Chair, if you will allow me, first, in indulgence, if you translate it or I'll translate it, make no difference. I don't know where the transcriber is, but.
She's actually online.
Okay, I'll speak right. A todos y todas, la persona de Hoboken, a todos los residentes del housing y de Hoboken, quiero desealarles un feliz mes de la herencia hispana y latina. Este es el mes de la huelva latino, y a todas las personas que son latinas y hispanos deben celebrarlo. Mountain Chair, would you like to translate, or should I? Okay, thank you. True to say, wishing everyone a happy Hispanic Heritage Month, Hispanic and Latinos. It's a very fine month to enjoy the different aspects of our cultures because it's a multi-cultural thing because we are not just one identity. We have many, many, many different flavors of our Latino and Hispanic culture. So you're all to enjoy whatever you find in an event. Thank you for that indulgence. Just quickly, I just wanna say, I wasn't here a couple of meetings because I was a little over the weather, but today, I just wanna say, I appreciate a couple of the things that were happening around the housing that I saw, and I think I spoke to Mr. Director of HON regards to washing out the benches, and that is a wonderful thing in 465, I think it was. So I wanna appreciate that and the many other great things that happened. I know that a lot of people usually are gonna tell you they have problems, they do, their apartments, individuals, so I continue to stand with them in any help and any expedience that you can give to their, so their problems, so that they can find solutions. I would greatly appreciate it, I'm sure they would, too. As a member of the public, I just wanna ask two, two things in case I can't stay, but I will definitely watch it in my, my jammies at home, but I don't want that on the record to strike it. Just, 2024-09-04, I'm not gonna read it because, of course, it's here. Again, as a previous member of the public said, 2024 or 916. And I'd like to know also if members of the public, members of the public could get further information. Again, I know that Mr. Director will be able to give us, give us that as he goes along with the meeting. 2024-019 and 2024-0919. If we didn't have a little clarification, the reason why you're rescinding the contract and the viability of having another person or entity stepping into that spot. So these are things that, you know, you can, I'm sure we'll hear from you all, and I appreciate it again. Thank you so very much, and God bless you all, and God bless the Presidents of the House. Thank you very much for your time.
We have no other person signed up at the moment, so I'd like to go public portion at this time. I just wanna reiterate to the public, any agenda items that are on the agenda, they do get spoken about as their, the resolutions are read, so you will get your explanations at that time. Director, could we move on with your report?
Thank you, Chairman Reis. And Teresa, can you hear me respond?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Thank you.
Good. Just quickly, on some of the great events, what a month we've had. Daniel's just done a great job. The Ten Reasons Drop-In Center at our 311 Community Room continues to grow in a successful manner. Recently donated TVs, ping pong table, that two evening a week program there. I believe this month there was an art auction.
Yes, we had our first fundraiser, which was an art auction.
And just some, some great stuff that's going on over there, and I know Chairperson Reyes is very involved over there, there all the time. And just some, some great opportunities for our young folks to drop in and do something other than hang on the corners. The Damon Murray Basketball Tournament was held on August 10th with great success in honoring Nunu. We appreciated the partnerships with Nunu's friends and families in holding an event kinda worthy of his memory. It went very well, very peaceful, very respectful, and I think a great time was held by all. Both the Rappord and Hopes held back-to-school events at Mama Johnson Field. Hundreds of backpacks, numerous school supplies were presented to our families. Thanks to those group. We've got this group called the Horseshoe Guys, and they're a group of guys that grew up at the Hoboken Housing Authority, many over on the horseshoe on Marshall. They're adults now. They predominantly live someplace else. They've grown up and gone elsewhere, and they come back to give back in honor where they grew up, and they did barbecue, and it was great food, had a DJ, and again, very peaceful and enjoyment for the Housing Authority residents. The Housing Authority staff did have our annual picnic, and we had a kickball game, and I'm proud to announce the Housing Authority won. I would be remiss if I did not address some statements regarding our chairperson at the last meeting that inferred she was under some type of investigation. I would like to be clear that the past allegations made concerning this issue were handled just as any allegation would be against a Housing Authority resident. No special treatment, no extraordinary treatment, just as any allegation that would come in. Due to confidentiality, because our chairperson is a Housing Authority resident, I can only say that the allegations were reviewed, taken seriously, by HHA, and appropriate action was taken by HHA. No further action or investigation is in process or pending. In addition, to my knowledge, no other organization is conducting an investigation, and that is really the end of that issue. I would also like to note a unique occurrence that is part of our agenda tonight, and it may answer a number of the questions that came up. As you may notice, there are a series of agenda items that are a repeat of agenda items from the last board meeting. Those agenda items are Agenda Items 09 through 21. All of those resolutions were submitted last month and this month by Commissioner Sanford, and last month they failed to move forward as a result of a lack of being seconded at the September meeting. Each of our Commissioners has a right to put in resolutions, and they can put in a resolution. The requests by Commissioner Sanford to place these items on the agenda were received by me via email from our attorney, Fitzpatrick, on Tuesday, September 10th, so we're not included in the board packet that we distributed to our board last Friday. But again, one Commissioner can put resolutions on the agenda, and the same resolutions were on last month, and they weren't even seconded. So take that for what you, what you will. Staffing, we do have some open positions, Public Relations and Policy Specialists, Development Director and Accounting Clerk. I am working with the staff with the input of Enterprise Partner to strategize the best reorganization scenario heading into the increased redevelopment activity going into 2025. I'll be finalizing this plan in October and keeping you posted. Hoboken Housing Forward update. On the redevelopment front, the city is proceeding with the environmental review. We had a very good meeting with them and HUG this afternoon on all public housing sites. Our meetings are going well. I think we're making some progress, and they'll be moving ahead with their environmental reviews. Developer Selection Committee is in full swing for our development partner under the guidance of the Chairman Frank Merchant. I'd like to thank all the folks that are taking part in that. It's a lot of work. They're working hard. Frank and the committee have been meeting regularly to evaluate the four proposals that we've received. Over the next few weeks, the committee will be doing interviews with the proposers. The committee hopes to make a recommendation to the HHA Board, we hope, in December, by the December board meeting, and be able to take it from there. So we'll have much more coming as that committee comes back to us and gives their report. The mission of that committee is to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve entering into an agreement with a developer. So they'll make the recommendation to the Board. The Board makes the final decision on the Housing Authority's recommendation for the developer. Once the Housing Authority has approved a redevelopment agreement, the city then gives a final approval of that developer and the plan. So there's a couple steps to go yet before we get there, but believe us, it's in process, and the gears are turning, and they're working hard. The Enterprise Team, HUG, EJP, and the staff are beginning our work on projecting our management needs and positioning into 2025 and beyond. The next steps is a revision of our section admin plan and our public housing admissions policy.
Director, can we just, sorry, secondly, the records show that Commissioner Sanford is not present?
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
The NJ Future Nonprofit, it's a statewide nonprofit that deals with housing and urban development throughout New Jersey. They were founded back in 1987. It's not, it's the leading organization in promoting, promoting innovative and quality growth in New Jersey. I'm proud to say that we're being recognized along with the City of Hoboken for our strategic and redevelopment plans for the Hoboken Housing Authority. We're being recognized on a statewide forum and winning their yearly award. Chairperson Reyes and I will be receiving the award on behalf of the Housing Authority on Tuesday, October 22nd, at the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center. If you look up the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, or if you look up the NJ Future Nonprofit, you will find a link over to their site. Unfortunately, they are only, it's a, it's a major event, so they're only offering us two tickets, me and Barbara. And, and there's a cost to go, so you're certainly welcome to go. I'd love to see you, but it's not cheap. We have project-based vouchers. We have received a response on both the VASH and Single Room Occupancy Project-Based Vouchers. I've sent a letter to both proposers, considering some needed information, and had some telephone calls. A second letter has been sent to them, and once that information is in, the proposals will be brought to our committee and to the Board. I continue to meet with residents, and, and yes, we will take a look at, if there's anyone that's been waiting a long time, I'll make sure, I'll make sure they get in. Housing for Hoboken met on September 10th. Mr. Merchant and I reviewed the Housing Authority's progress on the Hoboken Housing Forward Initiative. I am announcing that applications to become a trustee for Housing for Hoboken are still being accepted. So if you or someone you know wants to put in an application, come down to the office and put one in, and they will be open until the position is filled. To date, we haven't had any applications for that position, so we'll be glad to accept it. Special capital projects, the defensible space fencing at Andrew Jackson, the portending is in process. The Harrison Courtyard project that you approved last month is in the contracting phase. The ramp work at the back of 310 Harrison is complete, and that big old ugly temporary ramp has been removed. The Adams Garden generator replacement is complete, but we are just waiting on PSENG to finish their gas hookup over there. The work on the Monroe boiler replacement is in process, essentially done, and they're waiting for a final part to come in to finish that. At Monroe, the other boiler is working really well. It's new and working well, so we're gonna get this one fired up long before the cold weather comes. As part of the special allocation, a capital funding for Harrison Gardens, the security camera installation on each floor, and the rooftop is underway, probably about 75% complete. Hallway and stairwell refurbishments, painting and tread repair work is underway. I was over there the other day, the hallways are looking good. They're, the floors aren't done yet, but the actual halls and stairwells are looking good. Exterior door replacements, there is a revolution, a resolution to approve this contract in front of the Board tonight. I've been working with the City of Hoboken on planned renovations additions to Mama Johnson Field. We're talking about the addition of a scoreboard keeper box, scorekeeper box, renovations of our postal building to include restrooms. We're waiting for the CDBG funding to come in to fund that work. Under that same CDBG funding, I put in an application for the above Mama Johnson Field renovations and security upgrades, particularly focused at the horseshoe lighting, playground resurfacing, and rodent-resistant trash receptacles. I can't wait to be funded for that. We are planning on replacing all of our trash bins with a new type of rodent-resistant trash bin. Yeah, we, we hope to stop their parties at night. So you'll, they're really, really nice. You'll like them when they come. They also have a recycling component, so you're gonna be able to do trash and recycle with them. Management report. As an immediate move to address our recent audit findings, Frank and I have appointed one of our experienced managers to begin internal verifications of file contents on the site. The work is ongoing with group sessions with the managers, with cross-training. We are looking to revamp our parking plan. The plan is being drafted, fully reviewed by the Rappord at a series of resident meetings and by the Resident Services Committee in October. We ask, we continue to ask any resident that sees a illegally parked car, feel free to reach out to your manager. Feel free to call it in. We'll have them towed. And I would like then to have Mr. Merchant, if he's so willing, to present his reports to the Board for this month.
Thank you, Director. I wanna start by, by saying, first of all, thank you so much for all the hard work that we've gotten to this point. We, we almost hit a milestone this month of 98%.
Occupancy, right?
Occupancy, right? We were off by .02% to be statistically there, right? The reason why we didn't make it is for another historical reason. We've been working very hard to get to the point that we can take care of the 10 accounts receivables, and I understand that we have been working together to get to this point, and now the fruits of those labors are here. But I wanna extend to all the families, if you receive any letters, please, we wanna speak to you before you get a court date, and we know we have the court date. Come see us before you come in, and we can get prepared for that day. Our goal is that we will enter into an agreement with every one of the families that will be able for them to stay in the unit. Our goal is not to have any evictions come out of this. Before we get to that date, I will be working with Daniel and Barbara with Hopes and look for kind of resources, because I know it's gonna be a difficult thing. For anyone who's ever been to eviction court, it's not a nice place to be, and if you have to go with one family, it's awful. If you have to go with the amount of families that we're gonna go to, I don't even understand how we handle that emotional toll that the families are gonna have, the staff is gonna have, and that we're in this together, right? So the goal is to get everybody right so that we can move forward with this redevelopment, so that we can get everybody's accounts where they need to be. So if you receive a letter, please come to the main office and speak with him and I myself prior to the court date. If you don't have the opportunity to see us before that date, we will see you, please show up to court, and we will always have the final opportunity to sit there and discuss what, what options are available still. So with that being said, we are at 97% occupancy right now. I added a couple of new numbers to this, this form, I, I, as, as we continue to try to make them clearer and give a little bit more information, I thought it was important to, we never really listed the number of units that 100% means on top, and I know that a lot of numbers go back and forth, so I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that 100% in public housing means 1,152 units, so now that's new at the top.
And that's your attachment one, right?
That's attachment one.
That's your one.
And at the top of Fox, you see 200, so we have a total of 1,352. There are a couple units that are off, that are offline from the 1,354 that everyone sees through the plans, because we have, we do have Hopes as one of those units, and one of our manager's offices is used to be an apartment. But with that being said, the repayment agreements, a lot of families have continued to. But with that being said, the repayment agreements, a lot of families have continued to do well with the internal repayment agreements, and we thank you for that, because that helps you and it helps us. The repayment agreements that you do through the housing authority, we've extended up to 10 years, no interest. So as long as you continue to make those repayments, that'll be steady income for the housing authority, and it'll keep your account steady. So thank you for those families who have done that. Families that have entered into repayment agreements currently are totaling 572,896. That is out of 116 families that are making those payments. We were just working through some of the numbers with the accountant and the financial committee, and the repayment agreements are starting to add up as a significant dollar amount in recovery. So that continues to work, and as we continue to move forward, that'll continue to add to our bottom line, that we need to be able to service our residents. As we move forward, we have now the court dates, and you see these numbers here at the bottom, the 116, that's 116 families that we have now gathered their information, they owe money, the paperwork is ready to be filed. There are 39 families who actually, they have signed complaints with the court that we are going to be either receiving or have received court dates. Out of those 39, I believe that we now have 32, 32 that are officially, we're going to be in court with this October 15th. So if you receive a letter saying October 15th, come ask for me in the main office or for Jimena, and we will guide you through the next steps.
Can I add something to that, Frank?
Yes.
Terry, this is Matt Fitzpatrick, just for a little bit of clarification. So over the past two, three days, I have gotten notification that most of the cases that have been filed, or at least the non-payment cases, have been scheduled for October 15th, as Frank said. And my understanding is, at the same time that I got email notification, mailings, or service started to go out to the tenants, I actually got at least one phone call from today, from somebody who received something from the court, scheduling his court date, so I just wanted to make the commissioners aware of that in case someone comes to you and says, hey, what's this? That's why tenants are starting to get that notification that they have a court date on October 15th. And as we keep going, there will be more for additional dates. October 15th right now is just the 32 cases that have been scheduled, with a few more pending, and then we'll continue to file additional cases as we go along. So if people come to you with questions, that's why, and as Frank said, if they do come to you, or even members of the public, encourage them to meet with the housing authority. Housing authority will consider, I'm not going to guarantee that they'll enter into a repayment agreement with everybody, but they will consider a repayment agreement with everybody, and it is beneficial to both the authority and the residents, I feel, to start that discussion before October 15th. If somebody shows up on October 15th, the authority might not be in as good a position to make an agreement. If they show up as soon as that comes in, they speak to Frank, they speak to Jimena, the authority may be more willing or more able at that point to sit down and go through it and have the framework of a potential agreement in place. My expectation, and this is up to the authority, is that everybody would still have to appear on the day of court, but it may be that some people will be able to work out the framework of some sort of repayment agreement, court sanctioned repayment agreement ahead of that date. Sorry, Frank.
No, thank you.
I just have a question about that. Why is the housing authority taking action through the courts?
Maybe I could comment on that. We have spent two years now, maybe three, sending notices to families, asking them to come in, catch up with their rent, offering repayment agreements, entering repayment agreements with people, asking, please, come in, we'll work with you, we'll give you a repayment agreement up to 10 years. We will do whatever we can, we will look for other sources of funding that may cover your rent, and we did that quite often with hopes, with other organizations. There comes a time when we have to say, they just haven't responded, you haven't responded, and we need to take you to court in order to move the process along. Also, I would say that residents understand that if you don't take, if we don't go to court, and if you don't pay your rent, you never will pay your rent. That will go out, that word will be out. We need to take these actions. We have an obligation to the community, to the rest of our residents that do pay their rent faithfully and on time, that if you owe us rent, you pay your rent, because that's what pays the bills, that's what pays the light bills, that's what pays the staffing, that's what does that. And we just can't operate without residents paying their fair share of rent. So that's why we're at the, I won't say the end, because as you heard the attorneys say, we've gone down this road, and we've tried and tried and tried to get people to come in, and even now that the court papers are out, come and see us. Tell folks, come and see us. If there's a way we can work with you, we will. But if we can't, we can't. So it's been the end of that road.
So what is the basis for court action?
Nonpayment of rent.
Nonpayment of rent?
Yes.
Because they've breached the lease?
Yeah, they haven't paid their rent.
Okay.
And a chilling number, ready?
Yeah.
So we see here, 1,205 is where we are as of this month, 1,246 is what the total outstanding rent. Those 36, 32 families hold $800,000 of that. So the day in court, that 1,200 immediately either becomes a write-off, or it becomes a repayment agreement, and if it does become a repayment agreement, it comes with 25% of it.
With no state payments?
With no, no, this is no state payments, this is out of pocket. So someone, like someone would have to show up to court, and let's use a simple example, if someone owes $10,000, and they show up to court that day, they will be expected to pay 2,500, 25% down. The 7,500, they'll have to do it within 24 months, two years, and that's if we agree to that. So depending, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but that's very different than the housing authority, 10-year no-interest payments, right? So, and with no down payment. So anyone who has not yet received a notice, come do a repayment agreement with us. If you receive the notice, we will still do one, but we'll do it in court. So once we get to court that day, I do anticipate that from the first batch, we will have at least half of those apartments be abandoned units, where people won't even show up to court, so then at least we'll be able to recoup those units. Of the other half of those, my hope is that they do enter into repayment agreements, which means we should be collecting 25% of that, so that day there should be a significant increase to the operating, and there should be, most importantly, it's going to put us on a path where those families who now, we had not been able to accept their rent, so every month I was charging them rent, and I couldn't collect it, so that's a double whammy. So let's say if there was a family that was paying $2,000, their rent is 1,800, right? I charge them 18, and then when the first comes, I can't take your money, so now it kept growing by that amount every month. So that amount represents about $30,000 a month that kept growing, and just charges that we were adding from the people that we couldn't even accept rent from. So by stopping the charge, by collecting some money, by putting some money now that's coming in through repayment agreements that'll be court ordered, it'll be a very significant difference in our numbers. I would say in about two months, we should see the difference. And most importantly, families that enter into agreements are now in good standing. Their record will show when they get that receipt at the end of the month, it'll now show, let's say, one month, whatever, the month of November, rent, and then at the bottom there will be a repayment, that's part of the repayment, but it'll show zero and then a repayment amount. And as long as they make those payments, they are now in good standing. And that's my hope, to bring as many families of these, we have right now, what is it, 200-something families that, 320 families that need to get out of troubled status per se. So thank you, Matt, I know that this has been difficult, thank you to the staff, I know that, thank you to the commissioners, I know that your leniency and in wanting to get this right all the way, just like we did with the redevelopment, took us longer to get here, but it gave a lot of families an opportunity without having to go to court. It also put us in a place that when we do get to court, we have our ducks in a row so that we can be successful in court, we don't want to waste our time, we don't want to waste anybody's time. And at the end of the day, I think this is going to be one of the best things for all the families, because we will have the resources to be able to give back to you.
And if I could just make one more comment, Director, on something Frank said, just to make sure I set expectations. If we go to court, day of court, somebody skipped, they don't show up, whatever the case might be, the housing authority would get a default judgment, it is not immediate that the housing authority would recover possession of that unit. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, that it doesn't mean the housing authority is going to be turning over those units the next day.
No, absolutely.
Still have to file for a warrant, execute a warrant, there still is probably at least a month timeline in there before the housing authority can retake possession, there may even be a little bit longer if there's property in there. So I just wanted to set expectations that it's not a matter of October 16th, the housing authority is going to have 20 units at least.
The 16th or the 15th?
The 15th is the day, I was just using that as the day after, but yes, 15th.
Yeah, and if anybody comes to you, just send them to the office.
Send them to me, I got a better plan.
So, and I thank you for bringing that point up, Matt, because just to prepare us for future meetings, this is going to affect our vacancy, right? So in the future, we have a plan for this, and we're now talking to HUD and working on ways, because this might be something that might work with the redevelopment, this is for people who abandon their units. But in the end, I think that everybody's effort and how it got to this point, it took us all of the two, three years that we've been working on this, and this is kind of like the beginning of it. And now from here on, we are just hopefully just on this path, and hopefully we'll get to the day that we don't have court dates. But hopefully, the goal is, is that now we'll have steady one or two moving forward, like any normal housing authority has, and then just move the regular course of business forward and get out of this severe, and this percentage of close to 40% of 10 accounts receivable is unacceptable for any business, so.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you, Matt. And I'd just like, in closing to that discussion, say, we're in the business of housing people, we're not in the business of kicking people out, and we will do everything we possibly can to look for folks to keep their apartments, because that's what we do. So thank you. Over to maintenance. We have changed our work order call-in system, I've had this on a few months, maybe last month or not, to a 01 number, call-in number. Attachment four is our plumbing report. I got Sammy, thank you very much for all of your work that you do, our buildings, being the age they are, plumbing is probably the biggest issue, always, always, always. You see it in our community rooms often, you see the leaks that come from above, you see the leaks that start on the fourth floor and come down to the third, second, first, it's a constant battle for us, and we appreciate our talented maintenance guys that are out there working. I'm calling Mr. Felix at 1:00 in the morning, and he gets out of bed, and he comes, so thank you, maintenance. Our elevator report is attachment five. We're not doing too bad, we haven't had any major elevator repairs in the past month. Our maintenance contractor report is fairly small this month, we've only got two bathroom renovation and unit repairs. We are going into the end of our fiscal year, so we're being a little bit careful on where we are at the end of our year for financial purposes. Our extermination report is attachment seven, so you can take a look at all the work that our exterminators are doing and what projects have been closed out. We are currently accepting applications for part-time building maintenance workers and part-time full-time mechanics. Please call your manager of residence with any specific cleaning or repair need. Our boiler crew is working on preventative maintenance and readying our boilers and hot water heaters in anticipation. Will it be next month that we'll be here with the heater?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're getting ready, they're ready, they're out there working.
I'd say by the end of the month, they'll be ready.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, they will be ready by the end of the month, there's no doubt. But next month, I think we're going to, you know, so I'm real proud of what they've been doing, they've been doing a lot of preventative maintenance, and are doing the final touches on our boiler systems now, and testing to make sure they're running when that cold weather comes. As time allows, our maintenance crew isn't making progress on painting and repairing lobby areas and stairwells, they've been working their way through many of the three-story walk-ups, and yes, they're going to get to Monroe as well, we talked about it today. Finance, we had a very, very, I think, good and active finance committee meeting this past month, and I would like to ask Commissioner Edwards, would you like to say anything or two about our meeting?
Great, it was a very productive meeting, and as you could, she's probably going to do, we now have the format for the financials to present to the board.
You'll see that as attachment eight, which is our June, it's ending in June. Again, our fiscal year ends in September, so you know, we're ending toward the fiscal year, end of fiscal year, but as we know, all financial reports are always about 60 days behind the actual close of that month. So during the meeting, we had a couple changes that we made to this June report that you'll be seeing included in the next report you get, but essentially, I think this is showing that our financial position, while we're not exactly making a ton of money, we're solid, we're good, we're working, we're alive, and we're going to continue to do that as time goes by. The other major thing that's been going on, I think, in finances, our banking services, our P group, we did do requests for proposals for a new bank service to handle all of our funds. We have four banks, financial institutions, that put in their proposals, and we're going through now, myself, Emel, Commissioner Edwards is going through interviewing those banking institutions, and we expect that we'll be coming back to you hopefully in October with a recommendation on a banking financial institution. Commissioner Edwards, I think you'd like that?
Go ahead. I'd just like to know which four?
I didn't list them, I hope you'll honor remind us.
There are actually five. I apologize. Because...
BCB, PNC, Providence, sorry, can you start over?
Sure.
BCB.
BCB.
Providence. PNC. Valley National.
Connect one.
Connect one. I'm missing one.
Just connect one, I've never heard connect one.
We usually use PNC, correct?
We've got them now, I guess.
We have PNC now.
And Providence.
And Providence for Foxdills, correct?
That's right, that's correct. Excuse me, do you know who Connect One is?
I don't know them specifically, but we actually interviewed them, I mentioned a very productive interview with them, myself, Commissioner Edwards, and Mr. Reckel was on the interview, and it went well.
Yeah, they have a number of housing authorities that they already serve, and they work in the area, so they've got some credentials.
And there's lots of publicly available information, and they are located in the back, maybe 20 or 30 years old, and they're a combination of several banks. I don't remember the names off the top of my head, but if you Google them, there's lots of information on them out there.
And who did we interview to Connect One?
They do have like a client at Hackensack Housing Authority that is utilizing them. So.
Thank you, Emel. Who is the individual that was interviewed?
His name was...
Paul. He was the senior vice president, he would be our account manager.
I remember the last name.
I want to say Beal or Peele. And also the treasury management person was on the call. We can get you those names, I don't remember the one that I had.
Okay, thank you.
The housing finance agency project loan just remains close to closing, they've just got to get us the closing documents. They've just got to get us the closing documents and we'll be out the door on that. In March of 2025, again, that loan slash grant will be completely forgiven, so that's been very successful. Finance has been working on the housing authority's voucher budgets for project-based vouchers and VAS vouchers and they've been working on contract management and publication of RFPs and RFQs. And attachment nine is our resident services snapshot and I believe Daniel could make it, am I correct? He didn't call me at the end. So just some of the highlights, we continue to have our Amazing Truth Society Senior Self-Defense classes. Seniors are making it happen, alright? We've got girls in here on the bike and safety on Sundays. We're glad to be hosting mental health support workshops at our elderly sites. We've got our Junior Youth Empowerment Program over in the Anti-Forbes Community Room at 411. We've got our Hispanic Heritage Celebration Lunch Parties coming up. Yes, yes, can't wait. Now, I've got to announce publicly and now that I am going to be out of town. So I'll be there in spirit, I'll be there in spirit, I really am, I wish I could be there. I love to dance and some of you know. So we'll be at Adams, Monroe and Fox Hill for those celebrating in that rich culture contributions, music and vibrancy of the Latino community. Home Senior Game Day are coming up at Monroe, Fox Hill and Adams. And again, our services, thank you everyone, the nonprofits. The Hoboken Food Pantry continues to come to bat for all of our residents, the Public Library, Amazing Truth Society, True Matters and the Harrison Gardens Youth Center on Mondays and Wednesdays. So 10 reasons. So join us on Facebook, sign up for our Nixle Messages if you haven't and we've got our community Google Calendar. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Director, I just have a question and it's because it's come up several times with a few residents. Actually, some of these questions came up yesterday where I've been hearing from residents that they've called in the work orders, but it's taken months to get it done. I had a resident who said three months and still nothing has been done. Is there a specific reason as to why it's taking that long?
I would ask that anyone, anyone that doesn't have their work order done within the week, to contact me, contact their manager and me personally. I put my phone number out there, you could come to the office and put a note in. I don't think that's acceptable and I don't think our management team finds that acceptable. I certainly don't. So now and then I will get a call that says, look, it's been three weeks and I will call maintenance right away and give them the kick. So please don't be shy, don't be shy, don't be hesitant. It's not, in no way held against you if our staff is not doing their job or we're human, sometimes things fall between the cracks, sometimes either a maintenance guy might not do his job or you may lose that work order or something might happen. We don't want that to happen, chairperson, so I'll be more than happy to expedite any of those issues.
Thank you. And I'll follow up with you and Sammy.
Yeah, yeah. Give them my phone number.
Resolution number 202409.
Excuse me, Matt Chair, those questions on the executive director's report?
Yes.
You ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
So I see here on page one of your report, you read out, I presume I would be remiss if I did not address...
Could you just walk into the microphone, please?
Sure. I am referring to the Executive Director's Report, page one, paragraph beginning, "I would be remiss if I did not address some statements regarding the chairperson at the last meeting that referred she was under some type of investigation. I would like to be clear that the past allegations made concerning this issue were handled just as any allegation would be against a resident of HHA. Due to the confidentiality that is due to any HHA resident, I can only say that the allegations were reviewed by HHA and appropriate action was taken by HHA staff. No further action or investigation is in process for pending. In addition to my knowledge, no other organization is conducting such investigations." Did I read that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, and at the time that you read this, did you also take an opportunity to apologize to the members of the public that had the courage to bring these allegations forward and speak up at the public meeting?
No, I wrote this, I wrote this over the last couple of days in my office.
Would you like to take an opportunity to thank the members of the public that came forward to bring forth these allegations?
No, I would not.
Alright, then getting back to your statement. "I would like to be clear that the past allegations made concerning this issue were handled just as any allegation would be against a resident of HHA. How were these allegations handled? Please explain that."
Yeah, there's a level of confidentiality with any action we take with a resident and I consider that those actions are confidential.
Confidential.
Yes.
Very well, then do we need to go into closed session to discuss this confidential matter?
I can't answer that. You can always do a motion to go into closed session.
So I would like to make a motion.
If that's a valid reason, attorney?
I don't believe, I'd have to double check, I don't believe that falls under any of the exceptions center into closed session.
Why not?
There are a number of exceptions that are enumerated in the Open Public Meetings Act, pending litigation, employment matters, things like that. To my knowledge, this doesn't fall within one. It does fall within the fact that there are obligations with potential criminal penalties under HUD regulations to safeguard tenant information. So I agree that any specific tenant matter without that tenant's consent should not be discussed or the authority board would create potential liability on the part of the board. Should not be discussed at a meeting.
Okay, so then getting back to your states director. Confidentially, that is due, data, data, data. HHA appropriate actions taken by HSA. So appropriate action is taken by HSA staff. Which staff handled this matter?
Well, I handled that matter along with the Director of Management and Mr. Reckel.
Okay, so it was just the two of you that are the HSA staff that handled this, no?
Yes, we're the leaders.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Teresa, could you please note that Commissioner Russo has, is not present? I'm sorry.
I've got it, thank you.
Then you write, "In addition to my knowledge, no other organization is conducting such an investigation." So is the HHA conducting any further investigation into this matter?
No, sir.
And is legal counsel conducting any further investigation into this matter?
No, sir.
Patrick, is counsel doing it as a legal team or are you doing any investigation in this matter?
I believe that question has been asked and answered, no.
Not by you. So there's going to be no further review by the housing authority with regard to this matter?
That's correct.
Related to this matter, I'd like to ask the Chair...
I'm sorry, could you just state that again?
Yes, regarding this matter, I'd like to ask the Chair if the Chair received a notice of violation on June 12th from Ms. Nancy Torino, the Hoboken Health Officer?
If you...
Okay, I'll read it then. It's, "Dear Ms. Reyes, the Hoboken Health Department has been notified by the New Jersey Department of Health of an alleged violation of NJAC 824 Sanitation and Retail Food Establishments, Food and Beverage Vending Machines and Cottage Food Operations that you are operating an illegal and unlicensed cottage food operation selling time-temperature sensitive versus time-temperature control for safety TS foods. TS foods may not be sold from a cottage food operation. TS food means a food that requires time and/or temperature control to safely, safety to limit pathogenic microorganisms, growth or toxin formation. TCS food are at risk for bacterial growth." Did you receive this notice of violation from the Hoboken Health Department?
I don't need to answer this if you have the information in question.
It's a simple question, yes or no?
I don't need to answer, can we move forward? I do not need to answer, can we move forward?
If you do not want to consent to continue to have this discussion, if you are going to continue to obfuscate and run this meeting in order to not discuss this matter, then I'd make a motion for the Vice Chair to run the meeting.
I would, Lally, would you like to make that a motion?
I made the motion.
Is there anyone here who would like to second that motion? Motion fails, can we move forward, please? Thank you.
Do you, so previously, counsel said that we could discuss this matter if you were given your consent.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
I'm sorry, barway, Ms. Lisa.
I absolutely will not give consent to have this publicly addressed. I think we've done enough of that, ma'am Chair.
Counsel, Counsel Fitzpatrick, at the previous meeting, I had asked counsel and the Director to weigh in on matters of law regarding this matter and if I remember correctly, you said that you would not offer a legal opinion of whether this conduct was legal or illegal?
Correct, that's not my purview.
What is your purview?
Any matter assigned to us by the housing authority.
Okay. Is it within your purview to discuss housing policies of this housing authority?
I'll answer the general question, yes. If you want to get into a hypothetical that is exactly related to this specific situation, I'm not going to play that game. In general, sure.
I'm not here to play games either, you answered pretty clearly. The answer is yes, that you can speak about housing authority policy. So let's start with various policies. I'm referring to...
Commissioner, can I ask you?
Business first and then...
Pardon me, can I ask you a question, Commissioner?
I believe I'm the one answering the question, asking questions. I'm asking, I'm looking for answers from you.
You know what, Commissioner, I appreciate that. I'll, you know what, I'm going to ask my questions. What does this have to do with the Director's Report?
It's mentioned in the Director's Report.
What is policy?
This matter.
What policy? We're not discussing this matter, we're discussing policy in general, aren't we?
Yes, the Director says...
Isn't that where we've gone? What does that have to do with the Director's Report?
I'm answering your question. The Director says, "I would be remiss if I did not address some statements regarding..."
I'd rather get into a minicar accident, just so you know.
And I've made it clear that the housing authority has no further action on this matter. Thank you.
And I'm looking into that, so...
Are you doing business first?
We do business first and then you can get to it?
No, because in previous times, you have tried to move this towards the end of the meeting and then at the end of the meeting, you have to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner, it's a waste of everyone's time, we understand your point.
It's not a waste of everyone's time. I was making a lot of progress until you showed up.
Poor reporter, I'm not hearing Mr. Russo, I'm sorry.
I said, we understand your point, it's a point you want to make, you've made it numerous times. You have every opportunity to go to every other outlet you can to make the same point, but we have business.
What is the point that you think you understand?
That you haven't asked to grind with the authority. You refuse to participate in anything that we do, whether it be committees or anything substantial and constructive at these meetings and anything that makes the lives better for our residents. That's the point that I understand that you're trying to make.
That is not the point of this...
But everyone else understands that that's the point that you're making.
Can we move forward?
That is your spin. We're not moving forward, if you move forward, you are trying to obfuscate your responsibility.
You have questions to ask, ask them and then be done with it.
And I'm letting you know that I will not answer any questions.
You've made that very clear, that's why I started direct questions.
Commissioner, under Robert's rules, which is what governs this portion of the meeting under the bylaws of the authority, you have the right to make a motion to have any discussion you would like. If you'd like to have this discussion about policies, please make your motion now.
Also, under Robert's rules, the chairwoman runs the meeting.
Correct, correct. But any member can make a motion to have a discussion on a topic that they wish to have.
Motion is a valid second.
Correct, and it's voted on upon the board.
Unfortunately, your motion did not move forward, so we are moving forward with...
You are continuing to operate this meeting?
Correct.
So that you can cover up board involvement in this illegal business?
Until I am told otherwise, that I cannot run this meeting, I will continue to run this meeting. I have given you ample time to put your motions on the floor and have them move forward. Unfortunately, they have not, so as the chairwoman, I ask now that this board continue with business. But we move forward with resolution number 20240901. Resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve the meeting minutes for August 8, 2024, regular board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Questions concerned?
Yes, I state for the record again that the Chair should not be running the meeting. She is obfuscating a matter of her own criminal liability here and she should not be running the meeting, the Vice Chair should be.
And Commissioner Sanford, I would like to inform you that if you continuously continue to defend me in this, not only in this area here, but in my job, because I work in this community, I have absolutely no problem seeking legal action against you. You do what you feel you have to do and I will do what I have to do, okay? So thank you very much and we move forward with the motion.
To ask you if you received a notice of violation referring to a specific violation of criminal law?
But we need call the vote, Director.
It is not defamation.
It is time to call the votes.
It is defamation.
Resolution 20240901, David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Segstman.
Yes.
Resolution number 20240902, Resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken housing.
Motion.
Second.
Question, yes?
Can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely, Commissioner Edwards.
And Emma, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Commissioner Edwards is talking to you.
Yeah, I know, it's second, so I'm trying to do a better job here, sorry. Page one, item 18, US Bank Expenditure.
So, so US Bank expenditure relates to the fact that we have capital fund expenditures and so they are our escrow authority agency.
And is that something that as part of the bank RFP, we could give to one of those banks?
I don't believe so and specifically because our capital fund debt is going to be gone next year.
Okay, so this is just for the debt that's getting...
It was 20 years that we paid to this agency.
Is this the 20% a year that gets renewed? It's not that long?
No, it's not that long.
But, so you're just saying this is going to go away next year, is that what I understand you're saying?
Yes, that is correct, like in 2025, we will not have a note, like I can show you, like our capital fund processing.
That's fine, I was just, if this was an ongoing expense, I just wanted to give it to one of our banks as opposed to a bank we have no relationship with.
I'm glad you explained that program very quickly, but...
If it's going away, that's fine. The next one I'm just curious about, it's on page two. What are the shoe reimbursements?
So as part of the union agreement, we pay to each of our maintenance employees up to $200 for the reimbursements and so that goes on our monthly list of bills.
Got it, just never seen that before. Page, let's see, where am I going, monthly other? Oh, other monthly other items one and three, supplement flood insurance?
Yeah, so we have to have supplementary flood insurance policies. So we have a joint insurance policy, but because we are under the flood plane, our policies expire right about like September 30th. So that runs a... So, that runs us $100,000.
Yeah, sorry.
We pay, excuse me?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, we are paying the joint insurance funds, but in order, like, they're only covering up to $250,000. And so we are getting supplementary flood insurance policies on all our buildings.
And... Hi, am I still on?
Yeah. You're good.
Okay. I'm blanking on the number, but I know a couple months ago we talked about total insurance for the year with something like a million three, I am three twenty six, something like that. And you paid 670 or something, I should have gone back and looked. Is this part of that million three, or is this in addition to? You still there? You might be muted, Emily.
Emily, you're muted.
Emily, you're muted.
So, this is gonna go into our new fiscal, and we're gonna have to work through that number.
So, it's in addition to the million three that we paid for this year?
No, that's gonna be a new one.
Yeah, because it's, it shows up, you designated these as reference 4514, and the only reference I see to insurance in the statements we looked at under tab eight is 4510. So, this is a brand-new insurance line item is what you're saying?
It should not be a brand-new insurance line, it's the same insurance line. But, maybe I did something wrong there. So, if I can take that offline, I apologize.
Yeah, and really where I'm headed is what's our total insurance gonna be? Because I remember it being something like a million three, which is about $100,000 more than what was budgeted. And is this in, because I think one of the items we're gonna approve in a few minutes, is this flood insurance included in the budget that we're gonna approve in one of the next resolutions?
Yes, it is.
My next question, I've just got two more. On the same section, line item number three, ironlock security. I couldn't find, let's see, it's 4480 in any of the financial statements. Is, but I know we do security. So, where is, how much are we spending on security, and where is it showing up now, or is this something new?
Certainly, I knew it was a favor.
Because if you look at the statements that we went over at the finance committee meeting, there is no line item 4480. And there is also no line item that says security. So, I'm trying to figure out where it is. Is it, should it be under COCC? Is this designated to each of the amps? What, where does this, where should this be? And if we've gotta take it offline and do it with the next finance committee?
We've got protective services contract costs on our lower-end public housing for the month period ended on page one of our breakout that we went over in the committee.
Right, okay, I'm there, I'm...
Yeah, it's about halfway down the page.
There's something that says contract costs.
Yeah, protective services?
No, I don't have anything that says protective services.
On page...
Oh, protective services, forgive me, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. 4430.14?
Yeah, and this is 4480.
I see that, yeah. So, I see that. So, that's where it is in the budget, but it looks like, again, possibly I'm holding the wrong number.
The reference number, if you can.
Yeah, the reference number doesn't look right. So, it is in that budget.
All right, and then my last question, and again, maybe it's there. On the same page at the bottom, residential services, and there's a hole goes on to page three. I mean, it's not a big number, it's $29,000. But again, I can't find residential services in any of the financial reports that we looked at at the finance committee meeting. So, again, there's so many numbers on there, maybe I'm missing it, but I can't find it. Where should residential services be in our budget?
Simply, Emily, where is resident services budget detail?
Correct, it's a better way to ask the question.
Because we struggle with it all the time.
Calling this out right now.
And for the other commissioners, this is why I've asked for that reference number to be there, so that we can tie these into the budget and figure out where we're going. And when we're done with that one, I do have one final request, and then concludes my questions.
Again, I'm not seeing it on our June report.
So then, to summarize, Emily, if you can get back to us on the insurance, where 4514 should be, on the security, where 4480 should be, and where residential services 4230 should be. Did I summarize that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's probably under, I would presume you could take a look, but it's on our June, end of the June budget, we do have tenant services, which is about a quarter of the way down, which is salaries and contract costs.
But again, there's no number 4230.
That's right, it's got a 4210 and a 4210.1 for contract costs, you see that, hey?
4210, yes, under tenant services.
That's probably where it should be. Where it is, yeah, and we changed from tenant services to resident services, right?
Well, if we could just, if that's the case, if we could just add the number in there so that we could agree.
Commissioner Edwards, like, if you don't mind me interjecting, it should go to 4210.
All right, okay. All right, and then my, so my last request, and I made this, I think, a few months ago at the finance committee meeting, and I guess I throw it out to the other commissioners as well. The way that this report currently is listed, you've got a description, you've got monthly maintenance expenses, then monthly maintenance expenses, and you've got all these categories. My understanding is that was there because there was a former commissioner who liked it that way. If there's no objection, and again, I remember, Emily, we talked about this, if there's a reason not to, let's discuss it. But I would really like this list of bills to just be in reference number numerical order. So, therefore, because even here, there's a few places, well, like that monthly other, there's numbers that jump all around.
Yeah.
And so just having, you know, just do exactly as you've done, where all the forty, for example, on page two, all the 4420s are together and there's a total for them. If you just do it that way, just by the reference numbers, then it's much easier for us to line this up with the budget. Unless there's some reason why people want that monthly maintenance expenses, which I don't remember us saying, that would be my request.
No, I think it was just a preference at that point, to be honest with you. So, I don't mind changing it either.
Well, I have to disagree with that. I believe that the monthly maintenance expenses were placed this way because former executive director Carmelo Garcia had buried a number of controversial, if not fraudulent, costs within monthly maintenance expenses. That, if that's my recollection on why it's being done this way.
We weren't just talking about just the maintenance expenses, though. I think the commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the commissioner was saying all expenses, list them in the order of where they're coming from.
Yes, I certainly understand what can I resume. I'm providing context to why...
I'm glad you're all speaking at the same time, on the time.
So, I'm providing context as to why the list of bills has been formatted this way. I believe that Commissioner at the time was concerned about approach.
If I may, Commissioner, I believe that any further discussion of specific individuals on your part may create liability on the part of the authority or yourself personally. So, my recommendation is if you want to get into specific names of individuals that you may have just mentioned, that would be more appropriately done in closed session.
Thank you.
Well, how can I talk about a closed session if you just says there's exceptions to closed session?
This would fit well within an exception.
Oh, okay, let's make a motion for closed session.
Is anyone like to second? There's no second on the floor.
See, no one wants to talk about it, so I have to talk about it here.
If you do so, you will be creating potential liability on the part of the authority or on your part, Commissioner? I'm just advising you that you may be creating liability on the part of the authority or on your own part if you continue this discussion.
How is it, how is talking about former executive director?
Commissioner, you have to speak into the microphone, you have to give the microphone.
I think that the lawyer has been perfectly clear in stating that if you would like to speak on specific individuals, they must be in closed session. Unfortunately, your motion did not move forward, and because you can make the housing authority liable, I am asking to move forward if you have any further questions and end the discussion at this point, as far as we go.
I'm trying to understand how there was a potential liability discussing the alleged crimes of Carmelo Garcia.
If, in order to answer that question, I will, it will have to be in closed session. I am not going to have this discussion with you in open session.
Then, motion to go in the closed session so that counsel can explain how I am potentially opening up this housing authority to liability.
If there are motion on the floor, would someone like to second the motion? Thank you.
What a wonderful circle.
I will point out, Commissioner, that any further discussion has not been sanctioned by the Board of Commissioners of the Authority, and if you choose to continue this line of discussion, it is not on behalf of this authority.
Thank you. Could we move forward with any other? Could we move forward with any further questions?
We're ready for the votes.
Do I need to make a motion to reform it, or are we okay?
I still have questions.
I think that was actually discussed at our committee meeting, and I think it was just an error.
Let it be administered.
I still have questions on most of this.
And if I may, Commissioner Edwards, the authority can proceed with the bills as presented this month, and any changes going forward would just be done administratively.
Could we just, I just like to add that since this has been brought up, could we just make sure that next month they are in double format that has been requested? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counsel Fitzpatrick, I've been reviewing the listing of bills. Is Fitzpatrick and Waterman a line item within this? I could not find it.
Then you did excellent work, Commissioner, know it is not.
Thank you. So, why is your, why is it not listed?
Because we did not submit a bill this month.
Why did you submit a bill?
Because we prioritized other matters having to do with the authority and decided that it would be appropriate to address them first and that our invoice could wait until next month. Next month, you will see an invoice, excuse me, Commissioner, I'm still answering your question. So, next month, you will see an invoice for both August and September 2024.
So, these invoices exist, and I could request them?
No, they don't exist. I just told you, we didn't have the ability, we didn't prioritize preparing and submitting them at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Director, could you please call the votes?
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-09-03, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to decrease the amount of the contracts for Harrison Gardens fiscal security enhancement.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns? Director, call the vote.
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-09-04, resolution adopting the annual and capital budget program for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns? Director, call the vote.
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-09-05, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for the maintenance and servicing of boilers and associated mechanical equipment.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns? Director, call the vote.
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-09-06, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award contracts for exterminating services. Motion.
Second. Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you. Are either of these also hired by the city, or are we using separate? I...
They're not, it's a separate contractor.
It's a separate contractor.
Okay, it's a separate, both contract and contractor.
Correct. It's a separate contractor. We did a separate solicitation, and we worked off the city specs, but it has nothing to do with the city.
And I guess my question is, how are we coordinating with the city? I mean, how are, because this is a citywide problem. Just more for information than disagreeing with the decision.
We have been meeting with the city, Commissioner, and we talk about strategies. We coordinate on how we're gonna approach particularly the rodent problem in town. So, we trade strategies. We know what they're doing, and they know what we're doing, without a doubt.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why is there such a vast difference in the two bids, approximately $300,000?
I have a hard time explaining that. Our estimate was right around the $80,000 mark. And why the other contractor came in at such a high amount, I have the slightest idea. But I wasn't about to give them that kind of money for this one.
Okay, thank you.
Director, there's no further questions, if anything, call the vote.
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Aye.
James Sanford?
No.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-09-07, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for Harrison Gardens door replacement.
Motion.
Second.
I have a question, Director. Is this the front door, is this apartment door, what is this door?
No, these are the main, the main entry door at Harrison Gardens.
All four of them?
Yes.
It's not all four, it's all eight.
Okay, front and then, okay, perfect.
It's time.
No, front and back.
And will these doors be...
We beefed them up, if that's what you want.
Okay, yes, that was my question.
Matter of fact, I rejected their first proposal, they had a, not proposal, their first design. I sent it back for more magnets and a better locking system.
Great.
So, knocking on wood here. But we think, we think you're gonna see quite an improvement.
And do we have in the future, if they're gonna work well, let's see, right? Would we be thinking of doing it in all the doors? Because I know that I get complaints about like 560, 655, the doors being smacked open.
Yeah, I would, two things on that. One is I would love to find the money to do that. Second, we have asked the architect that's working on this to see if there's a retrofit that can be done to all the doors.
Okay.
So, we're gonna see through the architect if there's a way that they can add one more magnet.
Our problem there is that there's a magnet on the top part, but not on the bottom. So, they figured out a way to, on that bottom, and it jimmys that top one. So, we're gonna see if there's a way to retrofit, which would be a lot cheaper. If not, that's a lot of money to replace all those doors, but we're certainly aware of the issue. Can I?
So, absolutely.
Who are we awarding this contract to? To Blackstone Group LLC. Even though they're $200,000 more expensive than the other one? Yes, we are. They requested that their bid be withdrawn, because they, they told us they made a mistake in their bidding.
When you say they, the apparent low bidder, Nella Carpentry and Masonry LLC, in accordance with the local public contracts law, informed the Authority that they made a calculation error and requested withdrawal of the bid.
And our architect's estimate was in line with the three sixty-six, not the one fifty-five. It would not do us any good to give somebody that can't afford to finish the contract, or the contract.
Yeah. Well, based on that information, I'd like to make a motion to reject all bids and go out to, to get competitive bids as opposed to, since there's only one bid on this.
Is there a second? Director, is not a second?
Commissioner Edwards, you brought up the question, would you like a second?
I'm sorry, James Sanford, Commissioner Sanford, but I'm the chairwoman, not you. I asked a question, it was not second, and I asked the Director to call the vote.
Gentleman to my, to my left, can I just ask a question? You can ask a question. You're not gonna ask?
What's the question?
Would you like to second my motion, so we can get some competitive bids on this particular resolution? You asked a great question.
And, and what I'm hearing is that the bid has come in, in line with what was projected for the cost of the...
Well, you know, after...
I've had twenty years of...
Thank you.
You asked a question, you answered it, let's move on.
Director, could you please call the vote? There is not a motion on the floor. There's a motion that was not seconded.
In the past, some people try to backdoor a bid in by putting up some false bids, not necessarily putting in a direct bid.
Director, call the vote.
So, I, I think that was a great question that you asked, and I'm going to have a discussion.
Call the vote, Director.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
This is exactly why you shouldn't be running the news.
You're right.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine oh eight, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for trash chute maintenance services.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
Why is there only one bid?
Because we only received one bid.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to reject.
Is there anyone on the floor who would like to second the motion? Director, there is no second, could we please call the vote?
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty...
This is silly, isn't it?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine oh nine, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the executive director's contract.
Motion to go in the close, go into closed session?
I'm sorry, there's no second to the motion, motion fails. Director, could you, well, actually, it's...
Is there a motion on Resolution oh nine? Is there, there hasn't even been a motion?
No.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion for Resolution twenty four, twenty twenty four oh nine oh nine?
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine ten, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to appoint criminal counsel to assist Commissioner Sanford with criminal matters at the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Commissioner, I would like a second.
I'm sorry, there is no, motion fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one one, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to request the Department of Housing and Urban Development to begin department of federal programs process in response to Frank Ray's criminal federal conviction.
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second?
Anybody want to second the motion? It's pretty easy.
Next one.
There's no second, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one two, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the memorandum of understanding between the Hoboken Housing Authority and the City of Hoboken.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Anybody want a second? Just have a discussion about the memorandum of understanding?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sanford, but I think everyone can hear me. I don't need you to go behind me and repeat exactly what I'm saying.
I'm right in front of you. I'm just asking a question on the asking.
So, is there a second to this? Is there a motion?
Please second the motion.
No.
No. Okay.
There was no vote.
Resolution fails.
Wait, wait, where's, where's there a vote?
No.
There doesn't need to be a vote, there was no second.
And there's no discussion.
Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one three, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to rescind authorization of the Hoboken Housing Authority redevelopment plan.
Motion.
There's no second on the floor? Motion fails, I mean, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one four, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the contract between the Hoboken Housing Authority and Reno and Kavanaugh.
Motion.
There's no second on the floor, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one five, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to terminate the contract between the Hoboken Housing Authority and Fitzpatrick and Waterman.
Motion.
Anybody want to talk about it?
There's no second?
No second motions? Anybody?
There's no discussion, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one six, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to withdraw the request for proposals for development, development partners for repositioning of public housing.
Motion.
Is there a second? There's no second, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one seven, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to request the Department of Housing and Urban Development return the housing authority to zero-dollar procurement status and review by HUD.
Yeah, I think this is really important, and I would really ask my colleagues to consider a second in the motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? There is not a second, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one eight, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to rescind emergency authorization on all work performed by Guarini Clumming, Guarini?
Guarini Clumming, yes. I would like to make this motion because, again, it is essential that the housing authority take action with regards to Guarini Clumming, and I really encourage my fellow commissioners to second the motion so that we can have a discussion.
There's no second? There's no second, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine one nine, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to direct the executive director and chief financial officer to recoup all payments to Guarini Clumming.
Yes, again, this is very important that we take action right now. Money is being given to Guarini Clumming, and I make a motion, I urge my fellow commissioners to second the motion so that we can at least have a discussion.
Is there a second? There is no resolution number, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine twenty, a resolution of, of the Hoboken Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to direct Hope County and Company to conduct a full forensic audit of the Hoboken Housing Authority in response to deficiency findings from the internal audit.
Yes, a few months ago, we had the internal auditor here to talk about this. So, I'm making a motion right now.
Robert's rule says there has to be a motion made, and then there has to be duly seconded for discussion, so... The commentary doesn't say... Commentary doesn't come before. It's motion first.
I'm making a motion that we discuss this because the internal auditor said that this internal audit wasn't...
It's not the way it works, Commissioner, you make a motion...
Is there a motion on the floor?
A motion has been made.
Okay, so there's, is there a second on the floor? There is not, so, resolution fails. Resolution number twenty twenty four oh nine two one, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to request the Department of Housing and Urban Development reassign Alice Wilson Henry to appoint a new, a new HUD representative to the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Yes, I'm making this motion because everyone, everyone wants to stop me and just try to...
Again, Commissioner, any discussion of the motion is appropriate after a motion and a second.
I made the motion, and now I'm making a motion.
There's no second, is there a second? Unfortunately, there's no second, resolution fails.
Once again, great job trying to shut me up.
If I may, first, Commissioner, I apologize. I want to correct something I said earlier, Commissioner Sanford. I do believe that the motion that you made to go into closed session to discuss a potential tenant issue might fall under one of the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, that which covers material disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy. So, if you'd like to continue that discussion, you can, I, I think it would be appropriate, if you'd like to make, once again, make a motion to go into closed session for that purpose.
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to explore something that we do with the council, and it kind of helps us to manage our agenda pretty well, that any resolutions that come before the city council must go into a committee and be heard in a committee before it appears on our agenda. So, I'd like to explore that option and see if we could do that here so that we're not, week after week after week after week, having the same resolutions put up that have no, that are not being seconded. So, I think it saves us time, and if there's some substantial information according to those resolutions, they could be openly discussed in a committee meeting where we don't have any of those restrictions that you, that you talked about earlier. So, I think, I think it's a good way to kind of manage our agenda, and it's a good way for us to kind of get into a room and have discussions, substantive discussions about things, rather than doing it in a meeting like this where we're kind of not, it's not productive, it's just not productive.
Madam Chair, and if the commissioner had something to say at the meeting, they could bring it up into business, right?
So... Yes.
If there's anything anybody had to say, they could always come on new business.
Can I ask a question or two from Commissioner Russo?
Yes.
So, theoretically, I've got something I want to bring up to the Security Committee, but I'm not on the Security Committee. What, how do I then approach the...
Yeah, so, the way we do it at the council is if I have an issue that I'm not on that committee, I would just submit it to the council president, and then the council president would bring it into that committee, because she's de facto a member of all committees, right? So, at that point, if one of the council members wants to kind of remove themselves from that committee so that I could come in and discuss it, by all means, they do that. If it's a, if it's a committee where it's kind of full, and council members are not willing to do that, then the council president would just bring that forward for the individual councilperson. So, and, and again, it's not this in-depth kind of hearing, it's basically just, hey, this is an idea I have, this is something that's concerning me, could you guys kind of just discuss it? If there's anything that, you know, I need to speak to you about, I will certainly come in and do that, and then it appears before the agenda. So, it, it kind of mimics what you see on higher, on the higher levels of government where things go before committees, before they actually go for a full vote.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
It's a wonderful way to try and...
Commissioner Russo, for bringing that up.
It's a wonderful way to get you to participate so that you could help everyone in that audience.
It's a wonderful way to try and support me, this commissioner, to a committee.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
This commissioner is calling all of you.
I would like, I would like to answer.
Raise your voice, try to shut me down.
First of all, I, I said it to vote.
While you guys have a discussion about how you're gonna shut me down in a committee.
Okay, but first of all, I would like to respond to Commissioner... I would like to respond to Commissioner Russo's, what you just said. I just want to let you guys know that we are in the process of doing that, of making policy changes, which will come in front of committees, of all committees, in a way to be more productive. I think this meeting has taken a turn where it's not productive for the residents of the housing authorities. I think if we have, it's absolutely not secretive. If you were to participate in every event, I don't think any other commissioner feels like we are secretive in any way, shape, or form. If you would choose to communicate with the rest of your colleagues, I promise you, every one of your questions would be answered. So, moving forward, moving forward, we could, we could not even... Moving forward, if there's any new business, now is the time to take, to handle it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I am.
I'm speaking, thank you.
Go ahead.
Last year, myself and Corinne and the director of the company, unfortunately, it was under the weather, we went to the Narrow Conference, and I met a lovely woman, and she came here, because she's a... Anyway, so she came here, and she met with the staff. And when she came, when she called me, she said that she was, unprompted, I was at work, that she was extremely impressed with how clean the, how clean our buildings were, how polite the staff was, and she couldn't say enough things, she couldn't say enough nice things about her experience here. And this is a complete outsider coming from the West Coast. So, that makes me extremely proud, I mean, we feel this way, but this is a complete outsider who was in the business for over probably thirty years, who's been around a long time and seen a lot of housing authorities. So, do we have work to do? A hundred percent. Are we trying? Yes. But I feel like we really need to just work together to make it better. And we are not trying to, to subdue anybody, because anybody can speak in public, uh, public portion, excuse me, new business, and we are following the same rules that you would follow in a city council or any other government agency. What is most frustrating to me is that somebody would want to sit on a board and not want to help and not want to be a part of the conversation. So, we encourage you, we want you to come back, participate with us, come to committee, see what's going on, so you have to have your answers before the meeting.